When I have to like start all over again in the same chip or tongue.
Hey, we're all set.
Right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Temwatare Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 at 7 o'clock. This passed and our meeting is called the order and I'll start with roll call. Commissioner Daniel?
Preston.
Oh, great. Welcome. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Great. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
What's that?
I'm here.
Commissioner Nelson, Vice Chair of Staff, and me, Commissioner Robbins. So, we are, we do have a quorum and I'm, and we're ready to go. We have, for changes to the agenda, we just have a couple of things to discuss during, during certain things. For example, our next item approval of minutes, we don't actually have a set of minutes, but we can spend that time, a little bit of time, talking about the council's decision to go to a more abbreviated form of record, meeting records. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Memo will come in it. That'll come during Brad's number six. Any other changes? All right. Well, let's go to that minutes meeting. Again, it's not an approval of minutes. We'll get those next time for, for Brad, remind me of what day he said.
I'm sorry?
When do we submit it? It's not real critical, but the date of the minutes we'll get next time.
Sometime in August of '24.
Okay, no, okay, okay, way back.
Yeah, we're, we're working our way forward.
So, a little ways, little, little time ago, but meanwhile, though, the council is, as those of you who may recall when we had our joint meeting with the city council, there was discussion and the council has decided to go to a much more abbreviated format, form for meeting records. And Brad sent a sample of those. Very, I had a nice response to that and I just wanted to make sure we got some discussion. I really agree with your remarks, but do you want to say anything? Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Well, if you go to Robert's Rules of Order, what minutes are required to contain our decisions. Discussion is not necessarily a part of minutes. But it also says, Robert's Rules, that the organization which is producing the minutes, our case planning commission, can set its own rules for what they want in the minutes. So, it's wide open from a parliamentary standpoint. I read through those minutes. Particularly think of what we're going through now, where very nicely, when we get a packet before a meeting, somebody's gone back and they pulled the minutes where we discussed that last time and it's in the packet. It's right there and we get to read through that and remember, oh yeah, I remember we talked about that three months ago. Now we're looking at what. It's very useful and it looks to me like the format we're moving into not give us that what we've had in the past.
Yeah.
I think that's would be very valuable to have, but I also at the same time understand that we don't have a person really taking minutes anymore. We've got to take. No, we get so much out of the takes.
Right. Those are good points. I, I really agree with that and I'm, I tried to say this during our joint meeting, but I, but maybe it wasn't persuasive or I, you know, I understand the power of the, the cost to doing the contracted minutes, particularly across all the supports and, and bodies that the city has. But I, I'm likewise concerned to have a, a solid record. And I just mentioned a bit ago about there's the letter of the law about, you know, public meetings, public records. And then there's the spirit of the law, which is to have something intelligible and, and meaningful as a record for what occurred in the meeting, more than just, you know, some very cut and dried and, you know, some action was taken without any of the context that brought us there to a decision. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm a, I am, for myself, kind of disappointed that we were going that way, but I, you know, I think we can make it work, particularly if we can think about, you know, our current staff supporting the planning commission, thinking about even within, even within the constraint of summary notes, I'll call them summary notes, not verbatim minutes. But I think there's, it's possible still to capture key points, questions, as well as actions. It'll be fairly short, but, you know, on the spot, particularly if you're, you're not inclined to say, go back and listen to the whole, you know, video, audio recording of the meeting, the Zoom recording, the Zoom recording, which, you know, takes, will take an hour, hour and a half or two hours, as opposed to a few seconds to read what was the, what was the takeaway. Yes, Commissioner Nelson?
Well, I, I was thinking about the purposes for the minutes besides the legal purpose that we have. And I don't know how often the public gets on the website and decides to read minutes or not. So that's a question there. But before I applied for this position, that is one of the things I did do to kind of try to understand a little bit what the issues were, what was going on. So I like the, I like the idea of some kind of midpoint. That at least gives some, some flavor of, if it's just an informational meeting, then it's informational. And maybe there's a way to attach a little bit of information to it. But if there's a robust discussion with some pros and cons, it would be nice to see that represented.
I agree. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Well, what we can do is that when we see minutes and there's a hole in the minutes and we want more information, we can go to the website. There's a tremendous amount of information that has been put on the website. First place, you can go there, especially for city council meetings, and you can get the agenda and what's been presented, the documents that have been presented to the member of council. I probably could have found the answer to both of my questions if I had done that. So, I, I don't think you have to go back and listen to the verbal minutes. I think most of that information is probably going to be available somewhere and a lot of it in the prep app that's together for the meeting. I probably could have gone back and found out where that 40 acres was. Reading that paragraph could have been in Shelton. Really, really didn't take where it. Rather, Jermaine to the, to the question was, you know. Consider them changing 40 acres. Well, what, 40 acres?
On to the people on Zoom. Do any commissioners on the Zoom have any remarks on, on this?
I have my hand up.
Go ahead, Commissioner Daniel.
So, I have a question. So these summaries, instead of the minutes, are we still having the videos because we're recording or?
Yes.
Okay. So we have.
All of.
Go ahead.
Okay. All of the planning commission and I think almost all of the other advisory boards are, videos are now posted on the website. And I made the mistake at a management team meeting last week asking if we did that and didn't know that we had done it for the past two years. So for planning commission, all of your meetings are posted, the videos are posted as part of that website.
Okay, because my perspective on this is the transition to just like summary instead of corporate word. I, I think it's something good. Because it's easier for people to read. I mean, if you are presented with, okay, let's see what they discussed or what they talked about this. Personally, I prefer to read a summary. And if I have further questions or something doesn't make a lot of sense, then I would request like the recording to see, but it's so much easier to just read the summary. So I would, I, I am, I like the idea.
I'm with Commissioner Daniel. I, I think the same thing as Commissioner Daniel, only because that's how I'm used to doing minutes. So it makes total sense to me. And if I always have a question, I just go back to the video and look at that area to hear the conversation and see it. So I think it's just getting out to the public that they can look at the minutes and go to that video in that portion at that point.
Good, thank you. Any, anyone else? Mr. Edwards?
I just kind of agree with, with what's been said so far, right? I kind of see the, the benefits and cons to both sides, right? And it would actually be kind of interesting to me to know if the city council was actually planning to get any feedback on these new notes, you know, like if people are looking at them or something like that and they do like them or not like them. To me, it would be beneficial to be able to get some type of feedback on them, just so that we would know that going forward.
I think that's a useful point to, I mean, we could see how it goes ourselves as a body for whatever period of time. And if we feel things are going well, terrific. If they're not so much, maybe then we, we decide what kind of message we'd like to send to council on the topic. Or even tonight, if we want to do anything. The, the other kind of thing, Terry, you brought up the Robert's Rules of Order, but the planning commission is actually kind of governed by its own rules of procedure.
Right. That's what I said, is that each organization, even under Robert's Rules, has its own authority to decide what's going to be in the minutes.
Is there, is there something about our planning commission rules of procedure that you think might bear looking at to, to change in relation to the minutes with you?
Not unless we make a decision of what, what we want done.
Okay. We usually review those, those rules of procedure. Seems like in the fall, I don't know, Brad?
Who, who writes the minutes now, Brad?
Valerie, an outside consultant.
An outside consultant. And so we're paying by the hour to have it done and that's the bottom line.
Well, that and she's, I think, decided she wants to retire at some point. Has politely expressed the desire to retire a few times and so.
And there's not very many other contractors that do that kind of work, I take it? Yeah. But we'll fall to staff, Anna, Erica, and Brad. All right. Okay, any more discussion on that or shall we move on?
Very, okay. So in your rules of procedure, and let me share this, everybody.
Okay.
Apologies, I was using the same computer screen for everything. So, this is, this is part of your rules of procedure for your planning commission. In the first page, it does acknowledge that the revised Robert's Rules of Order govern in addition to these rules of procedure, but these rules of procedure call out minutes and recordings specifically. So. Yeah, so it really says recordings, if they're not available, then minutes should be detailed enough. So essentially, it, it call, it says that the recorded, the video itself should probably have priority over written minutes as part of this. Now, as we were having this, this discussion, I was thinking of three different things that we could do to sort of address some of the points that you raised as part of the desire for more detailed record of what was discussed. First of all, there was, there was a point made, I think Elizabeth, prior to the meetings, you may have made after we started, that it would be good to have a note of the, the key decision points and where we had agreement or disagreement. So that the council and the public would understand, here's how we got to a particular decision. It wouldn't be incredibly detailed, but it would at least say, you know, we've had this discussion, some favor this and some favor this. Another thing to think that I think would be worthwhile doing is, especially when we're dealing with documents you'll see multiple times, like a comprehensive plan update, is acknowledge in the documents, here's a comment that the, the planning commission made about a particular section, here's how it was addressed. So we can, we don't have to detail that in the minutes, but we can detail it in the document.
Yeah.
The last one I was thinking of is one that we've talked about, but I don't think we've really ever done for, on the planning commission, is when a decision or a recommendation is given to the city council, that additional information or a short summary of here are the things that, you know, the sides approved this ordinance has written, goes forward to the council. So, we, like the planning commission say, as part of this discussion, we want to acknowledge that the minority have these particular viewpoints that we think are appropriate for the council to consider as part. So that is also another mechanism, I think, to ensure that the council sees sort of the level of discussion.
Yeah, I do think that that sort of contextual information is, is really, that's, that's the whole, the whole gig right there.
Right. But that physically could go into the packet that goes to the council that they see. Our recommendation is this and here's the more detail.
Same thing for the memo, Brad. Would it be helpful for navigation purposes? Like if we are calling out specific conversations, do put the timestamp in from the video?
If possible.
Okay, because you can usually collect the link. And I don't know how it's recorded here, but where, in previous workplaces, that you can collect it at that point. And the video that you, like, link starts at that minute.
Yeah.
At that second. So it can be helpful.
I haven't tried looking at one of our Zooms. Are these all on YouTube or where?
They're YouTube. So I don't know if they, in, in some systems, they have the ability to do the timestamping a lot easier. I'm not sure if YouTube gives the same flexibility. If they do, how that works and everything else.
Experience with going back, I haven't done it for these, for this city, but, but going back and looking at Zoom, Zoom comes on at a precise time. And you may look at a blank screen for eight minutes or so, until the meeting actually is brought to order. So.
Depending on when they start the recording.
But I will try and find them, I promise you.
Okay.
It's like, I go to YouTube and Google.
My experience, YouTube is one that has timestamp recording available.
For the council members, for commissioners who are not in, in the room, I'm actually going on to Zoom to our website. So, under, if you go to the City of Temwatare last page, and let me go ahead and share a screen again. One, about that one. Okay. This is our, this is our splash page at, at the city website. Under the government tab, you'll find the meeting agendas and minutes under city council meetings. That includes all of your minutes. We go to the meeting code webpage. Under that, you'll see every, every meeting that the city has. There's an agenda document, which is a PDF or an HTML. There's the full agenda packet. There are minutes that have been approved, typically city council minutes, but there's also the videos. So, for example, your planning commission meeting from last April 22nd comes up. And. The. Anyway, oops.
Is it on the right side there, Brad?
Here we go.
Left side, excuse me.
So it starts here. So all of the, all of your agendas, all your packets and all your meeting stuff is together. And grace is, is prominent in every one of these, so.
Rightly so.
I love it.
All right, great. Thanks for that quick memo.
A good sport.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's still going. Okay. All right. I don't think there's any necessarily an, an action or, or anything like that, but, but we'll, we'll just hopefully be tracking on how the, how those, the summary notes are coming along and whether that's useful to people.
Yeah, and I think it's also we could keep track of how it works and what things we need to change as part of this. And that's, I think, just part of what we can do.
Good.
And when are we starting? Tonight's meeting?
I believe June, beginning of June.
Oh, okay. Valerie is still on board until then, okay.
It wasn't like as of now, but probably very close to being as of now.
I will, I will just say that congratulations to Valerie on her retirement. And I really, really, really thank her and appreciate all her work capturing our minutes up till now.
She's going to Greece in September, if you're.
Very good. Good for her. All right, let's move on to item number five, commissioners' reports. Anybody have anything you'd like to, to mention? About doing? Looking up to see if there's a hand raised. Okay. Not hearing any, let's just go ahead and move on. Let's go to Brad's deputy director's report.
We got a few items to go through. So first of all, I want to make sure that all of you got Lisa's email for yesterday regarding prohibitions on campaigning, using public facilities and so forth. This obviously is going to hold true until the election in November, but any type of campaigning, any discussions, anything like that should not happen in, in the meeting or in this meeting room. Outside is fine, that kind of thing.
Using any city channels or any of that kind of.
Exactly. So it's, it's just a, you know, just a reminder to everybody because we have three council positions up in the mayor election, so. We talked about meeting minutes, wanted to also let you know for our staff support, Jessica Lee is, is our admin assistant, who is going to be your primary contact for administrative staff. And Erica will be your backup. So if you have questions or anything about meetings, agendas, anything like that, and if Erica, if Jessica's not available, reach out to Erica and she'll be the person helping you with that. Also wanted to mention briefly about the habitat conservation plan. We are, our consultant is still working on putting the draft together, which is no real surprise to me because when we started to make changes, it changed the entire document. And it's 160 plus pages of, of stuff that has to be coordinated and worked out. So we're hoping to have an internal draft here shortly to review and then the public draft to follow pretty fast after that. So just make you aware that that's going to be coming. And it's something I think I would like to have a work session with the planning commission to discuss once it's available again.
When do you think that might be?
I'm hoping probably July, August. Again, we need, the staff hasn't seen the, the draft and has to go through a few cycles internally. But once, once I think we're ready, we'll, we'll make it available. Last item is, Mike is retiring, as I mentioned. He is, despite our best efforts to lock his door and not let him out, he's found a way out. So we've also, the, the council, excuse me, the mayor has also appointed my, me as the new director. I'll be starting in June 2nd. We're also in the process of drafting my, the stuff for my replacement, which hopefully will be listed shortly. Terry, I'm looking forward to you applying. You've got the experience. So we're going to be in some transitions. What that means for how we're going to manage planning commission and our schedule, we're probably going to have to be a little more flexible than I anticipated in terms of deadlines. We're probably going to be in fairly good shape in terms of having the draft, overall draft comp plan ready. But responding to some things and so forth will depend on staff capacity and my capacity to play both roles until we have a replacement.
Okay, cool. Hopefully you'll, you don't have to wear yet more hats.
Well, the problem is I'm not going to get a lot of sympathy because Brandon, our, our public works director, transportation engineering director is wearing four. So little, little sympathy if that happens, so.
Well, congratulations, though.
Thanks for your currently wearing two. No?
No, just go on, thank you.
That means we won't see you here anymore.
Long range. While we don't have.
Thanks. All right, okay. Maybe you can pop in from time to time. All right. Okay, well, good. Let's check out, go to, going to number seven, public comment. Brad, is anybody online?
Chris Lester is online.
Hey. Chris Lester, if you would like to address the planning commission in, on general matters, if you would state your name and where you live and any affiliation that you have.
No comment tonight, I'm just observing.
Well, great. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Brad, did you have, did you hear from anybody by email or other means in the means since our last meeting?
No, we didn't receive any comments by voicemail or email or in person.
Okay. Good. Let's move to item number eight then, our 2025 comprehensive plan periodic, periodic update, the lands for public purposes and utilities. There's a little bit of a, some of us had a truncated set of materials on the utilities part, but we can probably still discuss a good portion. Dana, are you taking the lead? Brad?
We're going to tag team. Erica spends her regrets, she is a deal with personal issues and so she was intended to, that she would be leading this discussion. So Dan and I will tag team. Hopefully we'll cover everything that Erica and Terry will cover. As I mentioned, excuse me, this is, we're talking about the lands for public purposes and the utilities element. So there are two different elements that are related that we've always sort of treated together. What we'd like to do tonight is sort of walk you through the full elements. This is the first tool that you'll have to see sort of our intended vision, all of the elements going forward in terms of formatting and how you'll see the structure for everything coming forward. So just be, if you have general comments, great. If you have specific questions on the elements and contents, even better. But it's really intended to sort of give you a roadmap of how this will go. Like I said, we're reviewing the format for parts one and two. We'll talk a little bit about the details in each of the elements, what makes them the lands for public purposes element or the utilities element. We will take some feedback on the goals, policies and some of the draft implementation actions. And we'll talk a little bit about the next steps in the process. So, just as a roadmap for where we're going, the, each of the elements is divided into two parts. Again, the, the intent of the parts was to make it easier for the planning commission and the council and other advisory boards and staff to use. The goals, policies and actions, most of the time, refer to the technical stuff when they need to. So it's not a gigantic document, semi-gigantic document going forward. So for the format for part one, which is the goals, policy and implementation actions, this is kind of the general format that we're going to use for all of the elements. We'll have, chapter one will be an introduction. It'll sort of lay out the purpose of the element. It'll, it'll give an explanation of what the element is made up of. Chapter two will go into the GMA. Chapter two will go into the GMA and element-specific goals. Chapter three will deal with the county-wide planning policies, which again are taking the GMA goals, bringing it down to the county level, which is how you do comp plan, planning in Thurston County. And then in chapter four, we'll deal with specifically the goals and policies. And the idea here, and this is why, this is a different thing from what you saw like when we, I think we last looked at the housing element in March. We had the goals and policies and implementation actions all together. After some internal discussions, we realized that really going forward, the implementation actions are going to be those things that are most likely going to be accomplished either throughout the course of the next 20 years or in the immediate three to five years, period. What that means is there's going to be other things, other actions are going to happen or be developed or thought of in the next five to 10 to 20 years that really the focus should be on how do the goals and policies support the development of those things? So in terms of new things that we can't think of now, in terms of more efficient approaches than say a specific implementation act. So really, the idea was we would pull out the goals and policies, have them as their own separate section to focus that attention, and then the implementation actions would become draft implementation actions that would be pulled from, that staff would use to develop annual work programs that the council would approve, similar to what we do for the work program for long-range planning. That allows more flexibility to flesh out those implementation actions as things come up and adjust them and so forth without having to go back and amend the comprehensive plan as we need to do that. So that's sort of the general idea. Let me stop share for a moment on this and kind of show you what that looks like in reality, provided I can find. So just to show you what that looks like in practice, this is the utilities element. And for those of you who typically pick up a printed version, because we had gigantic file sizes that didn't print, this is what you would see. Now, of course, I'm going to remind everybody that the electronic version was the complete packet, and you have no excuse if you don't look at the electronic packet. No more hectoring. So this is, again, part one of the utilities element. Table of contents looks remarkably similar to the outline I just gave you. In the background information, we explain the overall how to read this element. We talk a little bit about the growth management goals. There are two that are applicable, short sections because this is not the land use element. One page for dealing with the county-wide planning policies as they relate to the utilities element. And then we get into the element goals and policies. In each of these sections, we have a how to read the table section, which includes, in this particular case, department leads where appropriate. So for example, there will be particular policies or goals that a particular department will take the lead on, either in this case, Community Development Department, CDD, or Transportation and Engineering Head. And then we've also identified a period for when these actions would occur. So, starting with first goal here, goal U1, promote efficiency when planning for inciting public utilities. In every version of the goals and policies you'll see, we'll identify the source of the goal or policy or implementation action. Either it's a brand-new thing, or it's a modification of an existing goal, or it's an existing goal that wasn't changed. We have a section that talks about why. Why are we talking about this goal in the first place? What's so important about it that, to remind people a little bit of the background for it? And then we'll go into the tables. And then Terry, for our purposes, this is alternating in colors, but they're all, all the lines are the same because these are all policies.
Easier to read.
Yep. Very easy reading for this particular portion. So in this particular table, you'll see policy 1.2, U.1.2, U, utilities, LPP, lands for public purposes, LU, land use, and so forth. All the things, figures, tables, goals and policies will be key to the element. So you have the policy, you have the identified leads, you have a discussion of the term of the plan. And then rolling to the appendix, Appendix A for the draft implementation actions, it talks about the description I just gave you for what the purpose of the draft part of the implementation actions is, that we wanted to make sure that we started with some ideas of what the work programs are going to look like, but again, allow for some development. There's a section about how to read the tables again. And then under each of the goals and policies, so the black, I mean, the orange background here are all the policies. White are all the associated implementation actions. So for case of say, U.1.8, we've got our policy here, and then we have one implementation action. And try to capture it there. So when you're reviewing the documents, this is the format that you'll see for each of the elements going forward. In terms of detail, the utilities element and lands for public purposes elements are probably the simplest ones. We'll get, when you see the housing element next meeting, and I don't want to scare you off, or actually I want to encourage you to attend, there's a lot more detail in these tables. So I just wanted to call that out. Does that format make sense to you? Do you have questions about that?
I have a question about essential public facilities.
Okay.
And are, I didn't see that among the abbreviations, but I would think that some of the public purposes are for essential public facilities. Is that fair?
We, we kind of struggled about where to put the essential public facilities. And for those of you who don't know, essential public facilities are things that the state has specifically said that these are things that everybody uses but nobody wants. But having said that, each jurisdiction has to allow for the ability to cite them somewhere in your jurisdiction. Those are things that are like airports and jails and rehab facilities and things like that. The 2016 draft, that was part of the lands for public purposes element. However, it really is a land use more than a public facility as such. And so you'll see all of that as part of the land use element at that discussion. Because we don't necessarily need to demonstrate that we have capacity for those particular uses. It's just that we have to allow for them when they show up, if that makes sense. So as development occurs, we don't necessarily have to open a second airport. If that makes sense. Or we don't necessarily have to open a jail, but we have to allow for that to happen.
Okay.
And for those of you online, I apologize for hopping back and forth, but it's just probably the best way to explain some of these things. So the format for part two, which is the technical information section, which is all the background work that we need to do to show our work for the state, also to show our work to demonstrate that we're making all the necessary connections and supporting the policies and implementation actions. This will vary depending upon the element. So each of it will have its own introduction, follow some similar lines, but from that point on, it's up to however we address that particular element. So in the, in the terms of how the technical part is done for lands for public purposes, we focus first on the introduction, which explains the purpose of the technical information and a map for how to go through it. And then chapter two is a review of, again, difference between lands for public purposes and utilities is this. Lands for public purposes are public services or facilities that are required for, to support development. Keyword, "public." Utilities are the privately-owned things that are necessary for development that we need to allow to happen, but don't necessarily have a level of detail to plan for, that you'll see in lands for public purposes. We can request a lot of information from PSC. We may not get that information. It's part of the struggle that we're having. But that's why we split these things into two parts. The other important part of this land for public purposes is it establishes the basis for our capital facilities plans, which are our six-year plan for building infrastructure and facilities to support development. So it could be a road expansion, it could be a new bridge on Henderson Boulevard. It could be all of those things that could fall under that category that are anticipated, provided funding occurs, and that's the underlying thing. Providing funding occurs, that planning or actual construction will start. And typically, and you'll see this in the fall, because we'll be updating the six-year capital facilities plan for '26 and '27, you'll see a whole host of very specific projects that are called out in the plan that either identifying, we're going to be starting the necessary design work, which typically takes one to two years, including property acquisition, and then we'll actually build the thing. And you'll see that in terms of timeline, in terms of starts and so forth. There are, will always be some projects that are always year fives and six. The East Street Connection is our favorite one. The reason for that is not necessarily that we always know it's going to be four years from now. It's because we want to make sure that if we have an opportunity, state funds, federal funds, can make a pitch on the regional level that this is a regional facility and get the funding for it, it's on our capital facilities plan to do. That's the important thing, so.
And they're not, the projects on the list are not in order in terms of importance. Sometimes they're in order of the funds that we can predict, the funds that we know, and so the priority does sometimes shift around depending on what funds become available.
Yeah. So there is sort of a built-in flexibility for us to take advantage of opportunities when we can with funding. The other important thing is there's always more projects and money on the list.
But at the end of six years, the list doesn't, they don't get all struck out, unfortunately. It'd be perfect if they did, but they're always carryover because, you know, we're guestimating what funds we might have available in terms of, and grants is a huge one, and it can be a moving target.
So the other thing is the CFP covers not only transportation facilities, but also improvements to City Hall, a new fire station, a new piece of, a large piece of equipment for the fire department, or things like that. So there are multiple parks and facilities also, I'm into that.
Anything that has been addressed, essentially. I think the fire engines and things like that.
They're big enough that they fall under. So the capital facilities review analysis is really the higher level, the 20-year outlook, that sort of helps to provide some of that information and support of the six years. So just as a FYI, what that, the purpose of that is. And where we can, we've identified potential funding sources. It's very high level. It's like, yes, we can take this particular fund and use it for this, and that kind of thing. Chapter three talks in much more detail about service, the capital facilities and services the city manages. So that includes our water service, fire, police, and so forth, plus the buildings we manage, the senior center, City Hall, and so forth. Other publicly cap, capital facilities and services are things that are needed for development that we don't own or manage. In some cases, like the sewer system, we manage the sewer pipes, but the treatment facility is operated by lot. Or inner-city transit provides transit service and supportive development. We don't, we coordinate with them, but we don't dictate to them what happens and so forth. Library is also another one of those. Appendix A is, yes, Terry.
We budget for them, right? I mean, don't we pay?
We budget for the.
Pay money to inner-city transit?
I believe so, but I don't know how we handle that as terms of capital facilities, parts of things. I think, I don't know, is what I'm going to say, because I don't know.
Is that for service? Because that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be capital then. It would just be some operational expenses.
Yeah, I don't, the only, they propose, say, improvements to their bus stops, and they pay for that, I believe, out of their funds. I don't, I haven't heard any discussion that city funds have been used to pay for those kinds of improvements. We typically will look for opportunities if they're making an improvement or we're making an improvement, to try to coordinate those two things. But I don't know necessarily how the funding for their improvements may or may not coordinate with whatever we have. Appendix A deals with the foundational documents. That's basically the list of everything that we use to develop the technical information. And then I wanted to call your attention to Appendix B, which is our new capital facilities equity checklist. This is a new thing that we, as part of the equity work that we have been doing over the past couple of years, that we're going to propose to consider, to use to evaluate projects that are going on in the capital facilities plants. It won't be in place for this round of capital facilities planning, but we are intending it to be in place for the next round in a couple of years. So take a look at that. Tell us what you think. You'll notice that that has a lot of notes on it that I've taken, but we're really, you know, working through the details of that. Utilities, part two for the technical, again, deals with different topic. Introduction is the same. There's a chapter on utilities regulations, which talks about sort of the intersection between what the public, state and federal and local regulatory environment is for private utilities. And then it goes into each of the individual private utilities that are provided in the city. Natural gas by PSC, electricity also by PSC. We have natural gas and fuel pipelines that are owned by Williams and a couple of other firms that cross the city. Telecommunications, then that's typically wireless and everything else. And then also we have the foundational documents that support that, plus our private utility contact information, who we reached out to, what websites and all that for additional information. So going into a little bit of the detail for the lands for public purposes element. Enthusiastic. I talked a little bit about what that, what's managed by the city. City buildings, our fire and emergency medical service, parks, open space, rec, police services, stormwater, I left out stormwater, transportation and water systems and facilities. So water systems includes the pipes in the ground that get the water to everyone, plus all of our wells, plus everything that was required to bring the water up to proper condition and all that, including monitoring for water quality and all that over time. We talked about, these are the other outside things. I left out schools. That's a gigantic one. Obviously, Tumwater School District covers most of the city. A portion in the very north is covered by Olympia School District, north of North Street. So we do coordinate with them. Talked a little about the sewage treatment, solid waste management, again, through LeMay. There are specific requirements now to deal with composting and so forth. So there are things in the utilities element that address that in terms of coordination with LeMay about how to deal with that, as well as how to deal with composting within city facilities. So in the Tumwater Managed Facilities, there are, there's four different parts to each of the sub-elements that deal with those particular things. So police or fire or transportation, each has an introduction and overview. There's a specific inventory of facilities and, in some cases, personnel dealing with issues. There are level of service standards where identified. Not every facility has a level of service. In some cases, we started with a level of service many years ago and are now moving away from that. So parks is an example of something that's evolving into something else. And then we've identified planned projects, costs, and revenues at a very high level, again, for each of those. So we talked a little bit about the relations between lands for public purposes, the capital facilities plan, our budget, and our functional plans. So lands for public purposes, again, is a 20-year plan. It's sort of the broad outline, setting the table for everything. Capital facilities plan, as we talked about, is really the six-year plan finances, specific projects that come out of that. The adopted budget supports the capital facilities plan. It's a two-year biannual budget. It really gets even more in the weeds about how we're going to pay for something in terms of, we've got identified funds specifically, we know we have it, here's how we're going to spend it. And then the functional plans are really kind of supporting the lands for public purposes and the capital facilities, but are very specific plans that are mostly required by the state that are even more detailed than the comprehensive plan, dealing with our water system, uh, the sewer system plan, our stormwater plan. So those are, if you want even more information on this and more detail, those are really the foundational documents that we sort of start with. And we're sort of pulling a lot of this together, you know, lands for public purposes to say, as development that we anticipate occurs, we're going to need more of this, more of this. And then refer to these foundational plans for more detail about how we anticipate. That will be addressed. So. The one issue that we run into is that these fall under different timelines. They're not all done at once. And so we have a comprehensive plan that is due in twenty-five. Our sewer plan is probably due in a, in five-year period, you know, so we're off, uh, which means the things don't necessarily mesh perfectly. But we try to get it close as we can and have them feed into each other as we can.
If push comes to shove about something, which, um, which timeline prevails?
All of them.
I would imagine it would mostly be the budget.
Yeah. Well, the budget will dictate ultimately who's available to do the work. Um, we haven't had that situation where we don't have the staff to actually get it done, except Brandon with his four different jobs. Um, that's one probably instance where it's been difficult. So just some of the connections again to the other elements. Obviously, we talked a little about the interrelationship between lands for public purposes and utilities. And I don't know why it changed on me. We also, transportation plan, obviously, will be coming to you hopefully next month. That will have even more detail than it says is going to be wonderful. He's our transportation engineer, transportation planner and transportation manager right now. So just be very nice to her. Um, also parks and rec are all kind of come into that. Land use, again, we'll be talking to you about that at the first meeting in June. Uh, that will set the table for where we anticipate growth and the kinds of growth and the intensity of growth and that kind of thing, which feeds into the lands for public purposes. Economic development is not a required element under the state, so it's being handled separately from this timeline. But it's important because if we want to do something, redevelop the brewery, redevelop the former washed-up site, those kinds of things, which are clear economic development goals of the city, how do we accomplish that? What do we need to be accounting for to support that growth and so forth? It's through these elements. In addition to all the state regulations of what we need to do to show our work and show the connections. Wanted to roll through some of the goals on the high level, so you have an idea of what, what each of them contains. First goal in the lands for public purposes is to provide necessary and efficient services to Tumwater and its urban growth area. The important part of that is, is twofold. Uh, necessary and efficient, meaning that if we say development is going to occur to a certain level, that we provide the services to make sure that happens. That means water and sewer, that means transportation, means fire and police, whatever. The other important part is this comprehensive plan covers not only what's within our city limits right now, but also our urban growth area. It's a twenty-year plan. The assumption is, and whether it occurs or not, uh, that will eventually annex in the urban growth area over the twenty-year period. And so as part of our agreement with Thurston County, which is the same agreement they have with all the other jurisdictions, is that they are letting us do the planning for our urban growth areas that are currently part of the county. Um, and that holds true for all of the elements in our comprehensive plan. The only one that really might differ a little bit is land, is land use. Everything else in the, in the current joint plan is adoptions of, we hereby adopt the transportation plan as shown in the two thousand sixteen comp plan, for example. So if a transportation project comes through or the development occurs in the UGA, our transportation plan says they need to do this, that kind of thing. So same, similar kind of arrangement here.
And that's because that, in the meantime, before that land gets annexed, the UGA folks actually go to the county for their permits. So the, they're under county jurisdiction until that magic time that they get annexed. So that's why land use is still separate, all the zoning matches county, all the.
Well, the zoning is, is something we work with the county.
With them.
Try to have our own UGA special zoning, if that makes sense. Meaning it's closer to what the city standards are than what the county standards are.
Yeah. But if there are kind of two, two questions around that. If there are needed, um, services and facilities in the UGA, who is responsible to plan for those?
Well, for example, if it's water or sewer, we are. Uh, in fact, that's sort of our hook for whether development can occur sometimes.
Yes.
Is you're going to need city services to do that. Um, and for example, as a, as an example, currently, we have a project that is, is in the county right now that is being proposed to be, uh, commercial use. Um, they're proposing to do it on septic, which is not acceptable. The problem, of course, is the cost of extending sewer to this particular area and so forth, and whether the project could ever occur without it. So there are other things that can be done to ensure that it becomes connected to sewer and all of that in time, those kinds of things. So that's one example of, of one level of development. In some cases, for example, if you're building a house, you, there, it's not as, the requirements for providing sewer are not as stringent as they are for higher level, higher intensity uses in the UGA. So it's not a, it's not a straight, if you, if you're going to build, you're going to need city water. It's a, where we, you know, it, there's, there's state law that governs how we do that and how the, there's, actually, it's the countywide sewer plan that governs where sewer is provided in, in terms of.
And is it in, do we, do we show, how do I want to say this? Do we, do we capture and indicate where, uh, development will be paying some or all of the cost of providing that, uh, extension of service?
All, all development pays the cost of extension.
Right.
Now, the mechanism by which they do so, whether or not they do so through, um, a local improvement district or they, they pay for it upfront and then collect from any development that occurs afterwards, that's on the developer, that's on the private side to do that. There's not an expectation or requirement for the public, the city, to pay to extend services to a private development. It, it's a you build, you pay.
Okay. Right. So that, that won't be reflected here because this is where the public money will go.
Yep.
Sure?
Yep.
Is it a, in case where it's shared?
There are, there are public improvements that will be, need to be made over time.
Yeah.
Any system, and that's also what's dealt with here. But it's also in a, in a way identifying where we anticipate if development occurs in, into such a level that we need to upgrade our other systems and here's how.
Right. Or if they build a system, but then later it gets transferred into public owner or city ownership and then the city then bears the long-term maintenance cost?
That's why we try to avoid doing that first.
Okay.
Like, for example, if you, you develop on your own water system, which is unfortunately not something we allow for in, in to begin with, we don't have to, we're not, we've already had to deal with the system taking over other systems that weren't done properly or were done to a certain, that were done properly at the time and then things changed. So that's, we try to avoid that because we don't want to pay for fixing.
And that's a whole nother ball of wax is bringing older systems, you know, into, into more modern, modernize them, I guess. All right. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Just a short one, uh, as an example, if you wanted to extend city water into, uh, the, uh, out past the city limits, uh, do we have to get the county to approve that?
As part of an extension, say, through county roads or, it would have to be going to.
Suppose somebody's going to, going to build a development, uh, not within the city limits, but, uh, in our future city limits.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, uh, we, we think that's a good idea. Uh, we want to definitely put them on city water. Uh, do we need the permission of the county to do that?
It is, what typically happens is that an application will come into the county for a particular use. Their planners, environmental health folks and so forth will identify a need for water or sewer service and so forth. And then the assumption is that the city and will, you know, as part of working out its own agreements, say, yes, we can do it, nor, no, we can't, or here's what it's going to cost. And then the county will take whatever the city is proposing and say, this is a condition of development. You, if you want to build this, you are going to extend water, you're going to, or deal with sewer in, in this way. So it, the, it's sort of a built-in assumption that development does, that as it occurs in the county, that county staff will have, and the, it's clearer cut with water and sewer and less so when it comes to transportation improvements at times. There are agreements that say that the county should honor the city's development regulations. We get into fights at times over that. Um, but anyway, there, there's a mechanism in place to allow for, uh, if, if something is needed to develop, the city will, and the city, it's city services, the city will, is, it's incorporated into the development proposal approval.
Mr. Nelson. Related, but slightly different on water. I noticed in the utilities element plan, there was language around saving, um, power and becoming much more efficient in it. I'm not sure I saw that, and I don't know where it would belong, around water resources and, um, being more efficient in our use of water. Does that fit into any of this long-term planning?
Yeah, and I, I seem to remember that we did have some policy language talking about efficiencies in water and doing that because it's similar to the power side of things. Obviously, when we're dealing with, with climate issues, that's, that's a big driver for wanting to, uh, improve the, the resiliency of the power system, plus obviously not using too much of it because it creates other issues. Similar thoughts were about how to deal with water. Uh, I, and I thought we had captured that in the lands for public purposes. If not.
Is it in lands for public purposes, not in utilities?
Right, right. And that's where I wrote the question to myself. And going a step further, now having lived in two different developments within the past twenty years and the power that HOAs have to enforce, everyone has to have a green lawn kind of things, where does all of that fit together?
That is an interesting one, uh, because legally, the HOAs do have the ability to have additional requirements above and beyond. Now.
Oh, they do.
What, what comes into play, however, is some of the HOAs, when they bear the cost of everybody has to have a green lawn, HOA facilities have to meet that standard. And the cost issues can, becomes much more of an issue for the HOA to realize, oh, our water costs go from this in the winter to three times this in the summer because we don't have an irrigation district, everything is through public water.
Right.
There's a real expense. And that's kind of how we've seen some of the HOAs start to make changes, is to get a better sense of, oh, this is what it actually costs. And maybe this isn't a great idea based on that. Now, we don't have the direct ability to change what's in an HOA agreement. That's a different matter. It's another, that's another level that we don't have. We can do it through education, we could do it through, in terms of stormwater, we have a bigger lever because the, the HOAs are responsible for maintaining their stormwater system to a certain level. If they don't do it, we have the ability to say, we're going to take care of it, we're going to charge you for it. We don't necessarily have that with, say, water or in power and so forth. So it's something where it, it, it's, whether we're dealing with a commercial development or we're dealing with an HOA or school district or anybody, I mean, any organization, it's a calculus about how much is it worth it to pay?
Well, the city, inasmuch as it's the water provider, uh, does control the cost.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Now, that's also a.
Impacts the school district. I mean, as much as we think it impacts the HOA, it'll impact the school district, sorry.
Well, it, it's.
I would prefer not to do it through cost.
No, and.
And it may be that it belongs at the council level or maybe even a voting issue about water conservation in the city of stormwater and that this is a value and therefore we're going to do these things now when we're not going to do these things.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's been a discussion with councils. So education, obviously, the very first thing to go with, here's why.
Yeah.
Here's the things to think about when you're doing this. There are other, then the next level is what the city can do with its facilities in terms of water usage and whatever, or power, or where it takes its power from and so forth. So things like the solar panels on City Hall was a decision. We don't want to be necessarily on the grid, we want to have our own system, et cetera. And then the price thing is available, I don't recommend it because that, that hits everybody. You can't pick and choose necessarily. Now, there are various levels of saying, if you go above a certain level of, say, typical water usage, we may charge up a higher rate. Try to capture that. And there have been talks about how to do that. That can get kind of complicated. I don't know if we've gone to that model yet, but I know that's one thing that has been.
See a lot of exceptions, a farm.
Yeah, or they could, you know, the city council could incentivize, uh, conservation measures within a, either an HOA or wherever, and if you have those, you, your rate is different. I mean, you could choose a lot of things.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to belabor it, but it really popped into my head, especially because we've had such a dry spring.
Mm-hmm. And WRS has plans and, uh, programs for water conservation and, um.
That's been a very big focus of what they do.
Okay. Well, thank you. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
I just threw out for, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, when I lived in Italy, uh, right inside the front door of the house, uh, was a main breaker. And, uh, we had three kilowatts of power. If we exceeded three kilowatts of power, we had no power. So there are ways for government, uh, to, uh, force conservation on people uh, because we lived under it for two and a half years in, in, in that house. And, uh, you had to make sure you unplugged the air dryer before you plugged in the refrigerator.
Yep. Yep. Or if you ran the hair dryer at your Austrian house and you shut down power to the house, you got a visit from your house friend. Which typically very, had very strong opinions for some reason.
But that's the way they manage, they, they, they have a certain amount of power in the grid. And the way they manage it is they put a ceiling on how much you could have. And you do the same thing with water.
I think too, um, I know with water conservation, one of the reasons, or one of the things I'm thinking about first is how the city itself uses water. Because as we, um, you know, are also working with the public, not trying to dictate to the public how they should manage resources, then it's, it provides a little bit more opportunity to lead by example. And then also, um, hopefully that catches. And then also there's, um, building trust is something that's really valuable. So if we're consistently, um, dictating and then not doing the same thing and not holding to the same standard, it could erode trust.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Brad, before we move off of this, I just, remind me if I'm, if I'm remembering this correctly, but, uh, it, it's the case that we have sufficient land within the UGA or no, within city limits even, to absorb this sizable increase, anticipated sizable increase in population. And we shouldn't need to annex that.
This, this number is for both the city and the UGA.
Okay.
So the assumption, and again, uh. So the assumption, and again, our, we're planning for the, all of those together.
Okay.
And this, this is important because going back, the, the source of that number for population is really what our allocation is for housing.
Right.
And when we were discussing at the regional level how to divide up what the state gave the county amongst the jurisdictions in a, in a fair and equitable fashion, we quickly realized that the method of allocating a certain number of housing units to the city and a certain number of housing units to the UGA really didn't make a lot of sense because we had a lot of units going out to the UGA, which, if you were going down that path, would have meant that we had higher densities in the UGA in the city. And we've fortunately realized that it made much more sense to say, let's look at the whole pie, all the numbers together for our UGA in city and allocate them higher densities within the city and focused areas and growth outwards. So this number accounts for both the UGA and the city growth as part of that calculus.
City proper plus the UGA. Great, good, thank you.
So the second goal is support improvements to provision of services. This is, again, environmental quality and capital improvements projects. And what that is, is can we do it in a better, cleaner fashion? Do we need, say, necessarily running power out to run our pumps? Can we do it through solar? Can we do some other things to, you know, offset impacts? And also more, obviously importantly, providing adequate public facilities concurrent with development. So that means as development occurs, water is available, sewer is available, transportation is up to support that level of development. And that's it for the goals for lands for public purposes. Like I said, it's fairly straightforward. Utilities is a little more complicated, but again, we're dealing with these four different things, natural gas, electricity, the pipelines, and the telecommunications. The focus really here was to sort of gather an inventory as well as we could based on the source material that we had, talk about location, talk about the capacity as we could determine, talk about the level of demand that we anticipated, and then build in the discussion about climate change and resiliency. We'll repeat this discussion, you've seen this discussion as part of the sub-element for the climate element on resilience. This is another thing that we really have to keep in mind when we have public facilities or in the utilities, is how resilient are those things in terms of being able to withstand higher temperatures or higher water or whatever the case may be over time? Or heat, or extreme cold, those kinds of things. So increasing efficiency when planning for inciting utilities, this is really working, a lot of working with facilities when they are citing facilities, having a clear and simple permitting process or whatever, obviously, that, that obviously takes into environmental conditions and so forth, but a straightforward permitting system so when development occurs, things can be done. This also includes developing the underground management plant, meaning taking the existing power that is maybe above ground and putting it below ground as we can, unless, of course, you like the two-week outages in the middle of the winter. And it obviously can work.
I was excited to see that.
Yeah. It's been an ongoing, it's not a new concept for us, it's not a new thing, a new requirement. It's just, again.
Slow to implement. I think it's two-pronged, I think if the new developments are doing it, how do you get those, the, all of the utility lines along all of the roadways where, that's where most of the outages seem to occur, yeah.
Where we can, road improvement projects, Israel did a little bit of that. Those kinds of things are where we really do that. I think Little Rock was probably a good example of where we went underground. Redid all the water and sewer, all those kinds of, it wasn't just the road, it was everything as part of that right away.
Like the iceberg, 90% is underneath.
Yep.
That's what we all hoped when it took a long time as we're driving through.
Exactly, I know. Not saying it's a, it's a simple, short process, is why it's easier to require it upfront than it is to try to do it after the fact. Goal two is increasing energy generation for renewable resources. This is, again, to reduce our carbon footprint. This is things that the city can do to incentivize that, either through supporting installation of solar panels on existing facilities, looking for large-scale, multi-jurisdictional opportunities for solar facilities, for example, or things that we can do in terms of improving our building codes and permitting practices to make it easier to do these kinds of things. Three is enhancing our distribution monitoring storage infrastructure, technologies and practices. This is a huge focus on the state level. This is something that has filtered down to us as part of the work that we're doing, either as part of the climate stuff or also as part of our utilities element. And this is where energy storage becomes much more of an issue than it has ever been in the past. The ability to have huge battery storage facilities, like the one they're building down in Bakota, 40 acres of, well, 40-acre site with six acres of nothing but battery storage, is kind of the wave of the future, whether I, that's a great idea or not. But the idea being that if you can capture the energy from solar or other uses during the year and store that and use it when you need it, rather than have this constant cycle of always having to use it immediately, that's something that's, obviously, we have to do.
It also. With hydropower for a lot.
Hydropower.
That's what hydropower is.
Yeah, that's.
Use it when you need it.
Right.
This also addresses electric vehicle charging stations and infrastructure, more things about that, as well as coordination with the natural hazard, natural hazards mitigation plan about service interruptions. Goal four, it talks about increasing energy efficiency and conservation as another way of reducing the, the carbon footprint for the region. Things that we can do as a city to support green buildings, green audits of existing facilities where we can hopefully identify things that could be changed in an additioning structure by insulation, new windows or whatever, to reduce energy consumption, and then any incentives that we as a city can consider to support that. So you notice there's not a lot of go in there and fix it ourselves, it's a lot of support and work with and that kind of stuff. But ensure vital utilities are created, operated, maintained, and entered. Really focusing on the impacts of new infrastructure, also identifying and working with utility providers in addressing safety and so forth. So we're not entirely passive in terms of the existing systems that, you know, we think that might or should be improved.
Brad, is this, would that be the goal, goal five, would that be where resilience to, whether it's climate change or natural disasters?
It's.
Man-made disasters?
It's more of a man-made disasters, and it deals a lot with pipeline safety.
Yeah.
Things like that, and.
Or other, other things, I'm thinking of substations getting shot at and stuff like that.
No, it, it really is sort of identifying what we can do to.
Okay.
Existing facilities safer, either through land use decisions.
Okay.
So the next steps in the review process, we're briefing, did you see tomorrow at 8 o'clock? I know Dana's looking forward to that. I'm not going to actually go home, I'm just going to go right to the cot.
Is there right now?
Yeah. We are sending both of these elements out to our, all the stakeholders that we've been working with for their comment, and we're also doing a broadcast email to all of the people that have, are part of the comprehensive plan update, mailing list to let them know that first, the overall schedule that we're anticipating these elements will be coming out in about a two-week cycle. So the hope is by Thursday, Friday, we'll have the lands for public purpose and utilities. We have a post on the website, but we get the email out to everybody so they can take a look at it, provide comment, so forth. Do the same thing probably with the housing element in two weeks and so forth. So this is all intended to release things in semi-managable chunks to lead up to adoption in the fall. You will see this again as part of the larger ordinance in October. We'll have one gigantic ordinance, which our city attorney has threatened to leave the city if she sees another thing from me. But the cool thing, I told her, she probably won't see this again before she retires. She wasn't happy about that either. We have ongoing battles about the length of our documents. But the intent is this will be part of the entire package you see for the comprehensive plan in, in October. And then again, any questions or comments, our website has that link to all the documents. We're using the update email and our content. Any questions?
Looking up at the Zoom, folks, I don't see any hands raised. Comments? Questions? Remarks?
No for now.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Daniel.
Oh, no, I just said no for now.
Yeah, nothing from me.
Great, thank you. Great. Okay, any other discussion? That's pretty sweeping, you guys, that's good. Let's see, no action on that one. I guess our next meeting, the 27th? Brad just mentioned, other than that, any other, any other discussion?
So just as a, again, the housing element will be coming for the 27th. We will, I will aim to get the packet out early next week, so you have sufficient time to look at it.
Okay.
There won't be maps in it, that will cause issues hopefully with printing the thing. But to make Terry happy, there are lots of tables and graphs.
Oh, good. All right. Okey-dokey. Thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Go ahead. As, as we go through reviewing these in this week-by-week, two-week cycle, and we come across something, is there some particular person that's in charge of each one of these elements that we should send or, like, we find a typo?
We, we've decided if you could send everything to our comp plan email at.
It's compplan@ci.tomwater.wat.us, and we all have access to that email. And that way, Brad does check out and go on vacation for a couple of weeks, we can still respond to and see your comment and can make those changes in a timely manner. So it's at the end of the, or at the end of the slideshow in the packet. But we can, it's a matter of, can we send an email from that?
Yes. This, this, this is one that we looked through here today. There's, there are lots of typos and grammatical issues and duplications where the same paragraph has been printed twice in two different sections on the same page. You know, the, the things that, that are going to happen when you rush something out. Are you all going to catch those without me? Did we waste our time by telling you that?
No, we would ask you to provide any and all comments.
Yes, please.
If you're seeing it and we didn't catch it, then we need to be reminded.
Your game.
What we need to fix. On an issue.
Assume that we went through it with the finest toothcomb that eyes who have been looking at it steadily for the past three months can, and so.
You may not see things.
Yeah.
You may be.
Things are.
Near to it, so, yeah.
And if, if it's easier for you to physically mark up a paper document, we, we can accept that.
We'll take, we'll take.
We can scan it in as a record, and then we can use that. Or if the PDF version, there is a, there is a way to add a comment into a PDF if you're comfortable with the digital.
No.
No, exactly, if you want sticky notes.
Yeah, it's kind of.
However.
We'll take, any comments in any form you want to provide, written.
Written out in the email, paragraph three, page two, any of this. Sounds good.
All right. Are we, if we're, if we're done for the night, then is there a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn. That was Commissioner Nelson. Seconded by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. All in flavor, all in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
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 All righty. Any opposed? Good, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good discussion.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone on the.
Thank you. Good evening.